Our Father, the Creator of God and earth, we worship and magnify you. It was your eternal love for us that gave us your only begotten Son to save us. As your love flows like a river, we pray for the Conover leaders as they come together to serve our community and our nation tonight. We include the leaders that are above them, give all our leaders wisdom, compassion, and concern for the well-being of all citizens. Please protect us from COVID-19, bacteria and viruses, racial tension and bad weather. Protect our first responders, firefighters, nurses, volunteers, retail workers, bus drivers, school staff, restaurants, teachers, colleges, hospital staff and nursing facilities in the Conover area and the nation. Give the city officials the wisdom to protect our families and make the right decisions. Today, we are reminded that we need to pray for peace and love. We lift this prayer up in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Conover leaders, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have some ten items, item one through five, which are minutes and a couple elections for National Small Business Week, Municipal Clerk's Week, National Police Week, and National Public Clerk's Week. We appreciate all of the folks. This time, unless anyone has their comments, we'll take the motion to introduce the minutes to make a legislative approval. Thank you for watching. All things out. Anyone? That's what we're going to carry. Item six is comments for our business guests. If you were here tonight in the light of the dress of your city council regarding matters of the city, we would love to hear from you this time. If you would step forward and state your name and address and capture that on the public record, and we'd love to hear from you through each of your comments or through other means for the courage you've all year. Any one who'd like to speak? Anyone? Up here. If not, I'm going to take the motion. Thank you, Mr. James. Set your camera off there, sir. Anyone want to vote? Motion carried. Item seven is ratification for a resignation of Mr. Don Bill for the city council. That was accepted in the open session on Monday, 26th of April, 2021, and being ratified here tonight. So I'm going to entertain a motion in a second on that.
Make nation league.
Thank you, Mr. James. Set your motion forward. Any further discussion? Tom, favor say aye. Any vote? Motion missed. And we will be, uh, this bill will be out of town for a week, but he says he will be back in for July, and we'll honor your service at our Deloitte.
He will do this.
Item eight, nine, and 10 will be out of touch with the votes. Just want me out there for you. And I'll ask Chief, go forward, please.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Hope you're having a good evening. At a time of, in our society nowadays, we hear a lot of bad news around the world, but tonight, this evening, it's an honor to be able to share some good news, especially when that good news is about one of our own. This evening, we're going to recognize Ms. Lori Connor with the American Heart Association Hero Award for participating in the Hero Act of Bystander CPR, which is a critical link in our chain of survival. This award recognizes the heroes that have stepped up to help save a life during an emergency. Lori has not only helped save a life within our own community, but she is also partnering with the American Heart Association to improve the survival rates of citizens who receive bystander CPR. On the afternoon of April 3rd, 2021, Lori was at the Home Depot, I'm sure with her family, and shopping for home and garden supplies. After checking out and exiting the Home Depot, Lori noticed an individual lying next to a vehicle out in the parking lot. Lori knew that this wasn't normal for a person to be lying there in the parking lot, and she quickly makes a split decision to check on the welfare of this individual. As Lori approaches the person, she realizes that the individual is in dire need of a medical attention. Lori quickly assesses the individual, finding that the individual is pulseless and also not breathing. Lori begins chest compressions on the person without hesitation, and then also calls out for other bystanders to call 911. At 3:10 PM there in the afternoon, the Catawba County 911 Center received that 911 call for help from the Home Depot. The cad narrative for the incident from the 911 center noted that a female is performing CPR in the parking lot area of Home Depot. At 3:15 PM, fire and rescue EMS arrived on scene, took over care of the patient that Lori had been in performing CPR just moments earlier. As Lori was relieved by the emergency service workers arriving, the patient had regained her pulse and was breathing independently on her own. So this evening, we want to honor Lori for her vital life-saving efforts with the American Heart Association Award. Lori, you want to come on up? And so this is a great honor to give this to you, and then also tonight, we're going to honor Lori with the Distinguished Service Award, which is presented to an individual that performs an act above and beyond the call of duty under moderate personal risk that involves bravery and a high degree of initiative and capability. Lori's actions on the afternoon of April 3rd, 2021 here are both worthy of recognition that promotes goodwill and also promotes the actions that reflect highly upon the city of Conover. So thank you, Lori.
Chief, would you like to present?
I can. So we give this to you, Lori, and that's your Honored Medal for Distinguished Service. Thank you.
From the American Heart Association, here for a coner, American Heart Association would like to say thank you. It's a pleasure to honor you for acting so courageously and swiftly, to offer life, sharing your story. Share pictures of your special award with your social media following, and use the hashtag CPR saves lives. Tell the world that you are a heart saver hero, how important it is to be CPR trained. Thank you, American Heart Association, and Mayor Pro Tem will be the subvention.
This is from the American Heart Association Heart Saber Hero Award, presented to Lori Connor in recognition of advancing the mission of the American Heart Association and emergency cardiovascular care through a courageous act in an effort to save a life.
Will you carry this?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll ask you this time. Randy Young. Randy is retired from our workforce team. He spent a number of years here with the city and does a wonderful job, and the citizens love him, and we certainly miss him. But we do have an honor tonight, and Mayor Pro Tem will breathe his citation, and we're also going to be honoring him with the highest award that I can bestow to any citizen, and that's the key to our city. Well, it fits everything except people.
Certificate of Appreciation, Randy L. Young, nine and a half years of service. Whereas Randy L. Young has served the city of Conover for nine and a half years as a utility service wastewater technician, too. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary participation, vital for the accomplishments of the city, and his years of service have been characterized by a zealous commitment to improve the community and publicly serve. And whereas Randy's years of operational and maintenance experience and knowledge of Conover's Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant were key to the success of the facility in meeting state and federal requirements, and his leadership skills, commitment, and pride in protecting the environment and the integrity of the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant, along with his proven quality of the wastewater affluent discharge to the environment, have greatly benefited the community. And the Conover City Council gratefully acknowledges his nine and a half years of service to the city of Conover and the community.
Now, perhaps the citizens of Conover and our city council would like to present you to our city. At this time, I'd like to ask Eddie, Eddie's Higgins, and I also have with us tonight is Tommy Moll. Welcome, Tommy. These gentlemen are with Anthony's Angels of America, and we're doing a fundraising run here in the days.
May 21st, 22nd, 23rd, the big day being May 27th.
Raising funds for equipment so the young folks can participate in running. So I want to read this proclamation. Weekend of Inclusion, May 21 through 23, 2021. Anthony's Angels of America is a national organization that educates, advocates, and celebrates inclusion of people with disabilities in endurance events. Whereas in addition of ensuring everyone can experience endurance events, Anthony's Angels of America aims to build awareness about America's special needs community through inclusion in all aspects of life. Serving as advocates to providing education and participating as active members in local communities, Anthony's Angels believes that everyone deserves to be included. Whereas people with disabilities are an underserved group in many communities in the realm of sports and athletics. Whereas Anthony's Angels in Catawba County is deeply committed to serving people with disabilities, along with their families and caregivers in Catawba County region. Whereas Village Motors, Anthony's Angels, Catawba County, Catawba Valley Angel Rally is an occasion dedicated to educate about, advocate for, and celebrate with athletes with disabilities and their families and caregivers. Therefore, the Morse Mayor Conover hereby proclaim the days of 21 May through 23 May as Anthony's Angels Weekend of Inclusion for City of Conover.
Same mouthful here. Yes. First off, invite everybody to come run while donate. There's going to be, the big day will be Saturday, the 22nd, starting about at nine o'clock. It is not officially chipped and all this time, I mean, you'll know your time if you want, it's just not going to be like official, like 5K, 10K, marathon, or whatever. There are a group of us, Conover Station F3 Men, if you're familiar with, F3 stands for Fitness Fellowship of Faith. We are going to try to do 100K, and we've all got sponsors following us. Our goal is to try to raise $25,000. The good news is we're hugging that. The good news is we still need you to come and join us and help us. Adaptive equipment that's coming here to tell you is extremely, extremely expensive for folks with special needs. And just tell Anthony's Angel a little bit more about that.
We invite people with disabilities to come and participate in endurance events, 5Ks, 10Ks, anything up to an Ironman event. And we push them in adaptive wheelchairs. The riders, we call them angel riders, the runners are angel runners, and the angel runners lend their legs to help propel these special athletes. We like to say we try to get them from the sidelines across the finish line. So it's been a life-changing event for myself and my family. We started about two years ago in the Catawba Valley region. We have grown our ambassadorship to roughly 120 people, and so we're probably the best kept secret in the Catawba Valley. But if you get out there at any race, you'll see us, you can't miss this pink. We kind of stand out in the crowd. Hey, listen, not everybody runs. I understand that, but everybody eats. So we're going to have Frank Southern Heights is going to have a food truck set up over here on the 22nd. We'd love for you to come by. The man is legendary with his smoked wings, his pulled pork, and he's going to be donating his proceeds to Anthony's as well. So it's going to be a big time event. President of Anthony's Angel, his name is Major Kim Rooster Rossiter, called Rooster because his last name is Rossiter, and that's how they named him in high school. And he was a Marine for 25 years, and the man told me to call him Rooster, so I'm going to call him Rooster. So it's really a big event for us. It's part of the Anthony's Angels Race Series events. There's only about a dozen of those from coast to coast. So we're excited. I want to thank the city of Conover for absolutely rolling out the red carpet and just accommodating all of our needs for this. We couldn't do this without the city.
Eddie, you run 10K for how many days straight?
I was up to 34. I think I got banned off, but I didn't marathon. A little bit of a red. Come join us. And I believe that if you want to sign up, is there another link on the city's page, I believe, right now? Sign up is there, a link if anyone wants to come sign up, donate. You can register that day as well.
Absolutely.
Join us. It's going to be a crowd of people, and it's going to be a good event for the city. One of the coolest parts of this, I'm looking out on my stall, I got a little bit of a celebration to be able to get back out and open up like a door. I mean, we haven't been able to do anything as a community in so long. And just come out, if you don't run, hang out, be a part of your community, man. You can shake hands and hug and whatever, still this is, whatever, you know. Come join us, be a part of your community.
Last of all, on Sunday morning, we're going to finish things up over at the amphitheater with the Unity Service, I think Reverend Donald Gray from down in Catawba at Mount Sinai Baptist Church. Peter West. And we're actually going to hear from one of our angel riders. He's non-verbal, but he's able to communicate through his computer over an iPad. So you could talk about somebody with some challenges. Come and hear this young man share his story.
You'll leave inspired. It might even be like a honor. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, God.
That's good stuff there. All right. Redemption of item eight, resolution nine, proclamation 10. I'm going to take the motion on that. Thank you, Mr. James. Second, Mr. James. Tom, favor say aye. Any further motion carried? Thank you so much. Wonderful business. Item 11 is the presentation, and we have Kathy Scheller. Thank you for coming tonight on MetroNet. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city staff, and residents and businesses of Conover alike. My name is Kathy Scheller, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs for MetroNet. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the $36 million investment, perhaps you heard me speak a couple weeks ago in Hickory, that we're making in the region with fiber optics. I'm here to introduce our company a little bit to you, tell you a little bit about our culture, and let you know who exactly MetroNet is. MetroNet is a 100% fiber optic internet television and phone company that was established in 2004 in Indiana. Since 2004, we currently are the fastest-growing 100% fiber optic company in the nation. We have grown in 2004, serving over 100-plus communities across 10 states. What we offer is a true fiber optic connection to the home, a direct line of fiber to the home into the business. We offer blazing fast symmetrical internet. And what that means is as fast as you download, you upload the same. We offer, currently, our lowest offering is 100 meg down and 100 meg up to the home. Our highest offering at this time is a gig down, a gig up to the home. And you know, quite frankly, I really like my position because we are investing in communities, and I think all of us understand the importance of broadband speeds and being able to maintain them, especially during an age of COVID where we're working at home, teaching our children at home. We're happy to come in and make a difference with communities that we serve. We have a passion for customer service. We found that to be a digital matter when we come into a new market. We have a 237,000 customer base. Fiber benefit versus cable. So what I meant when I said this to you is we come in and we bring in all-new infrastructure. We call that infrastructure future proof. Personally, in layman's terms, the only devices that will be connected to your strand of fiber are yours in your home. And quite frankly, I don't have MetroNet, less than 20% of communities in the country have a direct connection to fiber optics. And so that means sometimes when I'm home, my speeds are good and then they're not because I'm sharing with all of my neighbors. The thing that I've learned in doing this across our entire footprint is that's exciting, especially as I mentioned earlier, we really need that broadband to stick. And when your connection is only your fiber, it will stick. We call it future-proof because right now, I mentioned, our highest offering to the home is a gig down and a gig up. All we have to do is technology increases, is change the instruments on both ends of that fiber, and we can go to 5 gig, we can go to 10 gig. We call that future-proof as technology increases. It's the latest technology available, it's a superior technology. And again, that's why I mentioned, sometimes I think I have the best shot because we go through a big due diligence process to select communities to make this investment. And when I finally get here, it's always great to know that my colleague who's in the audience, Eddie Massingale, has been working with the city of Conover to get us to this point where I can make this potential announcement. Fiber benefits, these are just some items I think are very interesting. If you have the true opportunity to attach to fiber, to your home, a gig symmetrical, your home will automatically increase by 3.1%. Competition, we all know this, especially as city officials, it's always good to bring competition into the community because what that does is it offers your constituents choice. And we're confident in the choice that we are going to be bringing, but again, at least your constituents can make their choice in what they choose. An exclusive access, as I mentioned earlier, only 20% of homes in the United States have access to fiber. And again, this is the fastest internet. What we do when we go into a market, internet is always measured by a third party. We continue across our footprint to maintain our fast internet speeds in people's homes and businesses. A MetroNet community will benefit from, as I mentioned, a high level of customer service. You know, sometimes when we, a lot of times when we come into a market where the second entrant, sometimes we're the third entrant. What we have learned is customer service is very, very important from the get-go, and that happens to us not only when we're meeting with city officials, but also we are doing construction from when people take our service. Very important to us. We score an average of 30% higher on our customer satisfaction scores than our peers because it is such a corporate culture for us, our organization. Broad availability, we're not just coming in and building certain parts of Conover. We're coming in and building virtually the entire footprint of this city, so everyone will have unlimited access. Local presence, we know that we are going to, I mean, this announcement, Hickory, have a regional store in this area whereby people can come in and ask questions, try out, what does fiber optics mean, what's the difference in speeds? We'll have a local presence there as well. As mentioned, the best technology available. Pricing, we had a discussion today earlier with members of staff, and we talked about that. We have attractive pricing, but one thing that I found to be very effective is we're very transparent about our pricing. A lot of times when we come into a city and you're welcome, I'll have Eddie make sure that we get links for your website, for your residents to take a look at that, and businesses as well. When we come in, sometimes we'll run a special, we'll say you can get a gig symmetrical which costs for $69.95. We want you to try it. After you try it, in this period of time, here's the price across the board. Everybody knows exactly what our pricing is, there's no hidden fees in that. It's really interesting, as well as we want people to try all of our services. So that's why we offer those specials, we'll make them, but transparency is key, not only in our communication with your residents and businesses and city officials and staff as well, but it's key for us as an organization to make sure that they understand exactly what MetroNet brings to the community. We're really big about redundancy. What we mean by that is when we come into Conover, we're designing it now, we will ring the entire city. So if something should happen where a fiber line got cut, we manage our own fiber, we will go ahead and move all that traffic over to the other ring while we repair the fiber. This really cuts down on any outages that occur. So we're very diligent about how we design the city as well. I always mention this at this stage, and you'll be hearing more about this as we continue down the path of talking with Conover, but we're very big about communication. A lot of times residents, we've not seen this kind of an infrastructure built since probably the 80s of this nature in your city. So it's really important that your residents understand who we are and what we're doing in the easements, and the public easements are right of way. Sometimes people don't even know where the easement is in their area, and we really work hard to communicate to them. We send them a letter, every single neighborhood, before we go into that neighborhood, we'll send those residents a letter, all of it directing them to an 800 number where we are staffed by local people that will answer the phone within our footprint. We always put that in there, that 800 number, and also a link to our construction communication website. We do turf signs, and as you see that one in the ground right before we get started so they can see it again to our website, again to our 800 number. And we put signs up in the entrance, any neighborhood we go into, prior to going in, we start our construction communication with that neighborhood 30 days out. Which has been really effective in some other communities that work with, is I work with the city on communication to their residents. This is not the city saying buy MetroNet. This is the city saying, this is what's happening, and this is who the MetroNet is. And so some of the best cities take our lane, the construction lane, and put it on our website. They have a way of communicating to their residents who we are and what we're doing. Our workers are clearly marked MetroNet. We give the city street sheets every single day while we're constructing in Conover. You will know where our crews are every single day once we start construction. It's been very effective, and it's something that a lot of the communities It's been very effective, and it's something that a lot of the communities that I've worked with in all 10 states have really appreciated. Because what's going to happen is after we start construction and in this communication piece, we're going to be able to have meetings with your staff whereby they'll, they'll be able to come back and say to you, here's why residents in Conover contacted MetroNet. Here's the percentage that asked questions. Here's the percentage that needed their dog fence marked. Here's the percentage that have restoration issues. Here's the percentage, you can actually monitor. That's part of that transparency, our work. In addition, we'll be able to tell you how much fiber was brought in every single month to your community. As we rolled into this communication process, it has been very, very effective, not only with the residents and businesses, but also with cities and staff. We, we believe in restoration. Again, that goes back to that customer service piece, part of our culture. Chances are, if we come in and don't restore as need be, the chances we realize that people being our customer are probably next to nil. So we work very, very hard on that, and we restore as we go. Restore within 24 to 48 hours. As mentioned, our crews are clearly identified, and those daily street sheets really matter. We send those not only to city staff, but we also send them to the police department, fire, safety, just so they know where MetroNet is at any given moment in the town. The construction website, which will make sure that you have the link just to crews and take a look at it. It documents questions or concerns. People can actually take a picture and upload it. And the real big key about this is responsiveness. Anytime a resident from Conover picks up the phone and calls 800 or goes on our construction website, our project director for Conover has, has 24 hours to respond back to that, that resident and let them know they were heard. Across 10 states, we maintain a 95% plus response rate on that. And that's just something that we're really proud of. Our go-to-market plan, as mentioned earlier, what's really great is when we go into communities, we really like to get engaged because that really sets that win-win scenario. So we like to support youth baseball. We like to come in and participate in community events now that they're coming back. And it's really important because we want to get our name out and let you know our culture and also get to know Conover as well. So we have consultative sales, too. Whereby we go to a neighborhood and set up a tent, and we're with the city on that with a, you know, fall year solicitation permits and that type of thing. So people really understand what that is. They go to our website and look at our pricing and all of our plans, transparency. And then we have a, as mentioned, a location that will be here where people can come into the store and ask any questions. I would be in this if I didn't tell you that after doing this since 2004, we've been able to come up with quite a few awards that I'm really proud. I've been here for quite some time to show you. And I think, too, just to see that we're part of safety. Safety is of course paramount important to us. Restoration and being able to keep our speeds and be ranked is, is something that's really important to us as well. So again, my colleague Eddie Massengill, Eddie, wanted to look up, there, there's your MetroNet, Massengill. He's here, and he's been meeting daily, but I'll be coming back to check on the progress as we continue to ramp up to this. But we are excited to be able to come into a community like Conover with this type of a magnitude of an investment because I know now more than ever we need broadband speeds. So we're happy to be here. Thank you.
Couple of questions. Do you anticipate any, any traffic or tree blockers?
You know, typically, the way we work is we do not typically close streets. That's not really happened. Now, if there's, you know, we'll put like cones up or something where people can get around. We do not close any major streets in the past that I've witnessed.
So you trench or you do horizontal bridge and grill?
So what we do is we do a directional boring. When we go underground, we follow power. So if there's a pole, I believe you have Duke Energy here. We have a pole attachment agreeing with Duke. We actually attach the fiber to the pole. But when we go into neighborhoods, we talked about that earlier, a couple are underground. We follow that communication grid, and we will directional bore. So not every yard will be impacted, but you know, we will follow that grid for that.
So if there's ever a need to go over there?
Correct.
What about, is it powered at the home or is it?
Yes.
All the way to the home?
It's all the way to the home, fiber all the way to the home, which is why we're able to maintain the speeds that we are. Yes, it's not to the node.
So is there hardware the citizens would have to ditch at or is that, be, put it in your?
Yes, whenever you go to the website, you'll see that. But typically what we use, we have something that, like a box that attaches to the home. It's very similar. The only difference is it converts fiber into the home. So everybody doesn't have to gather around one laptop that's connected to the fiber. We have that mechanism to do that, to get it in there.
Does your company get private company or public company?
We're a privately held company.
Mentioned storefront, you actually anticipate having a storefront?
We do anticipate having a storefront. I think we're looking in the region, so it'll be somewhere. I know that everybody's pretty close to each other, so we'll have one pretty close by, probably Hickory or who knows where we're doing it. We're looking for that location as we speak.
So is the $36 million, is that for the whole region or is that for Conover?
It's for the whole, whole, the whole region, yes.
Is there a cost to the city?
There's no cost to the city. All we ask for in our cities is that there's a good partnership with staff on getting permits and kind of working through it. We really, we don't come into a city and, and stay there for a long time again. Safety, restoration, everything, communication is important, but we need to work well with the city in order to achieve that end result.
When you talk about the region, are you just talking about the Cobb County? Are you talking about the New York form?
We are looking at, we're looking at, so Hickory, Conover, Newton, Mountain View, and St. Stevens in this area.
What, what was the main reason that you chose to locate here? It's interesting, we have a lot of cable made in factories here. Probably one of the largest Conover optics, they were made in factories with Gordon.
Yes, but you know, it's really interesting. So when you're privately held, and we have a lot of due diligence meetings, we were building, building up Fayetteville. So we're also building up Greenville here in North Carolina. And my colleague, Eddie Massengill, would stop in Hickory and always have lunch there. And we knew that we were interested in North Carolina, and he said, you know, let's start looking at the industry and what you have here in this area. And that is ultimately how we ended up being here. Because again, it's such an extensive due diligence process because it's a large amount of money, that that's how it really gets started. And you know, quite frankly, when I present like this, a lot of times cities hear this, and they approach our organization, and we're able to kind of take another look at a city or start looking at a city for the investment as well and start to check the boxes off.
So where was he eating?
Well, actually, a couple of places. But you know, when you're 64, drink a lot of water, you make a lot of stops. But that's, but I was stopping actually on my, on my way to it.
So, yeah.
What contract were you looking at?
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing is, we're looking at starting in sort of the fall time, the fall of this year. And typically the build, and you know, I travel over our footprints. I don't know if you've paid attention to some of the states. Minnesota, that's, like, it gets cold there. So I always say weather permitting, but I don't think that's going to be as much of a problem as it is up there in Iowa. It's always great for me to come here, by the way. So it was usually, I, you know, we estimate, we're really, as long as we work well with the city, it can be, less than two years, we could be complete, or a matter of months for this particular town. Also, it's important to note that I did learn today, we're going to be constructing Hickory, Conover, all the ones I mentioned simultaneously. This way, all the crews that come in will be spread out. And that is what we seem to help our cities, too, with the, with the amount of workload. So that's how we're going to be constructing.
So potentially our residents could subscribe maybe two years from now?
They could, but what's really interesting is we have on our, we have a, and I'm going to get these links. We have our website, our regular website, and our construction website. And both of those allow people to put their addresses in to see exactly when we're going to be there. I encourage you to look at this construction website. You're not on there as of yet, but you could see what, what a resident here can do is they'll click on North Carolina. Conover will come up, they'll click on Conover, and a map will open up. And it will show exactly where we are and exactly when we're going to get to their neighborhood. It's really extraordinary, but I'll make sure you get those links. But yes, they could. And sometimes people sign up sooner, I just, you know, just to let us know that they're interested.
Have you made this presentation to Newton yet?
I've not made this presentation to Newton yet.
You have made it to him?
I have made it to Hickory.
And made, signed on?
They're, they're extremely excited about the opportunity, so yes, they're very excited about it.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Very, very important.
Thank you.
That was the presentation. What we want to add, well, is the public here for conditional zoning. I'll, I'll go to 40. And I'll ask, Mr. Plante, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public. For your consideration and review is an amendment to the conditional zoning for the Walmart. In 2005, the Walmart was approved as a conditional district. And to make changes to that site kind of requires an amendment that we're, you all are considering tonight. Sunbelt Rentals is requesting this amendment to tight plan for Walmart to develop an outdoor storage facility. It only totals 600 square feet. Roughly six parking spaces would be taken up to provide some outdoor storage that would complement what's happening in the Walmart itself or renting out equipment to, you know, residential folks or who are commercial people for small equipment and medium-sized equipment. So it won't be.
Would they be moving the inside stuff outside? Or would they be doing both?
Both. Small stuff inside, larger stuff like tillers, maybe a lawnmower, maybe a, you know, a lime. What do you do, kind of distribute lime in your yard, stuff like that. Stuff that would be equipment that people wouldn't necessarily have at, at home on a regular basis, but would go and rent once or twice a year. I have Mr. Billy Houghton here from Sunbelt, and I know he'll, can explain things a little bit more. So this, these images here, that's kind of like what it looks like. And it'd be placed here way off to the side of the Walmart. So this is like the main entrance in, and it's going to be well off to the side sort of alleyway, and it helps with the flow. So folks who, who maybe order something right inside the store, they can meet the salesperson or the staff out here to pick up their equipment. They can drive by and they'll kind of do this one-way exiting. So it kind of just flows that way. That's what they would plan to do. In addition to this structure, Sunbelt is requesting that a, a smaller sign would be added to the front of the building. Signage was one of those conditional elements that was in the approval, so we are cautious with changing signage without your approval. So this is a modest sign, it's about four feet square.
What kind of, I'll, I'll sign on first. Go ahead.
Okay. And in addition to that, you know, when you take a card study of a conditional district that's been set up in the city, we want to look at the whole site. And so I have been in communication with Lisa Wright, who is the store manager. And she's been a store manager there for 14 years, so I had the pleasure of meeting her on the phone and chatting with her several times. And so she's agreed to sort of re-stripe the whole parking lot. Now, they were hoping to do that last week, and they just ran out of time. They've had some supply chain challenges with paint and other things. So what they're asking for is a reasonable timeframe. The reasonable timeframe being by June 11th, the end of June 11th is the Friday early in June, that they could get out here and re-stripe all those areas. You know, back in the day, this, this was sort of, the stamped concrete was sort of rendered in a reddish paint. Things like this kind of signage yield, you could read it. So they want to clean that up, and they also want to plant all the striping throughout the parking lot.
So redo the, the red stamp there?
Yes. Yeah, that's the point. And I noticed, you know, we've had, it's been a heck of a year, and they, somebody ran through their signs, so that's actually going up now. They weren't really waiting on it, it was just getting materials and other things. They came through as a permit, and we issued it here just to replace that sort of monument sign in their front corner. The planning board, of course, reviewed this proposal for this amendment, and they supported it. And they also recommended a reasonable timeframe to allow Walmart to catch up with this paving and repair. So they recommended approval to move ahead with a sort of common sense approach of reasonable timeframe. So I can answer any questions, but I also know we have some.
What kind of structure is this going to be?
Okay, so it is a.
This is a conditional use, and everything's supposed to look the same, with those have the same paint colors and the same.
Right.
All this stuff. So is this going to be something that's built, or is it going to be a?
It's, what's proposed are two Conex boxes here and here, an open area in the middle that would be covered with a framing, and also front sort of grill work or gate. This, these boxes will be entered from the insides. So this is open on the inside, open on the inside. Outside door here is what this represents. And it will all be painted to match the color of the Walmart, which is sort of a tan, neutral tan kind of color. So they agree to that. You can see kind of the color of the, the saw here, it'd be sort of a similar family of tan. They don't want it to stand out, but it's also.
It's not going to be green.
It's not really green. Some communities it probably is green, but not, not probably.
Not probably.
You'll see here, it's taking up six spaces here, but this is behind a tree island, and so there's a tree there and some other small bit of landscape in that will be in front of it.
The trees, but?
Yes, sir.
So why not head it backwards? Yes, it'll be a lot of, a lot of, not by showing it.
Well, I think it's to kind of bounce out where the staff member has to come out in front of the store and meet the person who's getting their car and retrieving their car. They've got to meet them at a spot where they'll get their equipment out, and we won't have a big delay here or, or back here kind of catch up to the back of the store here. So that distance is a little shorter. Oh, there is power, okay.
It's a, it's a power issue. I'm with Walmart, it's a power issue. And, you know, further back is somewhat of a security issue for us to manage. There's a camera right there that doesn't have to be moved. And in all fairness, it's, it's post-pandemic. It's where the kids' playing place used to be that we can't keep clean, that didn't employ anybody, these guys that brought workers to the town. And, and basically, it's this, through Walmart, it's agreed, if you guys agree to it. And it is a power issue. There's a power pole right there. And we also feel like it could be during the day better managed by our garden center associates that are in the area. So it's, it's, it's a partnership, just like it is here in the community with Walmart, you guys.
Mr. Plante mentioned.
I have everything he has, except I had June 9th. And it's true, we were scheduled for a re-striping last year, but due to COVID, so many things have been pushed back. I had June 9th, and I've been in contact with Ken Letso and Ben Dill today, just checking on all the information to make sure it's accurate between all of us.
Sir, just for the record, what was your name?
Nelson, Nelson Schmidt.
Nelson Schmidt. Thank you.
And I, I worked for Lisa, she just couldn't be here.
Okay.
Thank you, Nelson. Appreciate it. All right. I don't know about, would you all like to? Not very much, please.
Not very.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Billy Houghton, I'm a senior manager in the business development department. And what, I, I'll just say, what questions do you have for me?
So the sign, the green sign, is not from the building, was that the problem scale?
It is.
Yes, sir, it's, it's not big at all. It's like a four foot.
It's going to be there, and not on this building over here.
No, sir. It's because we've got our location in the front, so it's kind of like, I don't know if on the other side, but there's, you know, there's a sign, like the same sign that says there's a bank or a McDonald's or whatever else might be in front of Walmart, so.
And this is all on Mel's building, pre-kept kind of?
Yes, sir, it's basically two Conex boxes with a, they're, they're eight foot wide, 20 foot deep. And inside's got a little wash area that's self, you know, self-contained. And then in the middle, just there, we can roll the stuff out and have it on display for the, you know, when people drive by. And, you know, if you've been in, in a while, we've, we've been open about two and a half months. Right when you come in the door, you grab your car here, we, you know, we're, we move right in where it used to be a little arcade.
Yep.
And inside, we have hand tools, you know, golf drills, empty demo hammers. Everything is gas and battery operated. You know, we're, we're trying to, you know, you'll never in our industry get away from the, you know, the fuels. But we're trying to be as environmentally friendly by renting, you know, we're going to have a small amount of gas-powered stuff. But we've got a lot of electric and battery-operated lawn mowers. I mean, we've got, got the majority is battery-operated.
There's no foundation, there's no structure?
No, sir. It, it is, like I said, it's a Conex box with an area in between, and a Conex box. And I say Conex box, these things are, it, it will be painted tan. You know, we're not going to have a big green billboard that says Sunbelt on the side of it or anything. It's, it'll blend in. We, right now, we've got one at Walmart in Salisbury, North Carolina, TDK, South Carolina, Monroe, North Carolina, and this way, Morganton. So we're, you know. So we're, you know, we've had, we've opened, Walmart's asked us to put five hundred locations in their stores across the country. And we're, you know, our home's Fort Mill, South Carolina. So we thought first place, we're doing, we've got thirteen open in Tampa, thirteen open in the Charlotte market area, and we're adding eight more, and then we're starting, you know, a big fulfillment center in the Washington DC area and, you know, putting another fifteen to twenty locations in there, so.
Tell me again about the, about the washing area. Terry, do you know anything about the washing area? You're not going to have any issues with that, are we?
Not if it's contained, you can take the ground, but if it's contained.
Yes, sir, it's, it's seventy, it holds seventy-five gallons of water. And we would hose off a piece of equipment itself. I mean, it, excuse me, goes through, separates the oil and the dirt. And when the water comes back through, it's as fresh as what you'd get out of a water fountain. But then, and then we take that, we take, take it out, take it back, and we've got a company called Safety Clean that picks it up at our fulfillment center, which is off Carowinds Boulevard. So it's, like I said, it's, so no water, no water will even spill on the ground. It's inside the Conex box, it wouldn't even.
And all of your rentals would be located in the box, nothing outside of the, you know, no mowers or something sitting outside of the.
The area? No, that's why we have, we have a sixteen-foot section that's, you know, with a cover. And we'll set some stuff, we'll pull them out of the Conex box and have, you know, nice display. But we don't want it really out in front, because we don't want our employees standing out in a parking lot where people are making a giant loop.
Is it air-conditioned?
Uh, no, sir. And like I said, now, there inside the building.
So they don't stay out there for?
No, sir.
I would add, those, these are anchored down under this sort of validation here. Those pylons or support, it's really anchoring into the ground to support those structures. It's not going to walk around or walk around or anything.
I just got one more question.
Yes, sir.
If I rent something from you, is somebody going to be able to operate it for you?
If you need to, we'll figure something out.
So if you do all the maintenance of the equipment?
What's that, sir?
Would you do all the maintenance of the equipment?
What we're doing here with this program, we've got a fulfillment center in, off Carowinds Boulevard, right at South Tripe, you know, right at South Tripe and Carowinds Boulevard. So what we do is, we don't have these people maintaining equipment. So say we have a tiller and something breaks on that tiller. We have a fulfillment center, they'll bring a brand-new tiller, put it in that spot, take that one back with these vans. They take it back, they repair it, and then put it back in the line of next, you know, round of stuff. So some of the brakes, we replace it, take the old one back to the fulfillment center. We have two mechanics on site, three drivers, and then it just gets put back into rotation.
So Alan, our rezoning would not allow for any storage of anything outside of that structure?
Correct. Everything's stored inside. And actually, they're going to keep it locked. I mean, this is a, this is their equipment, right? So they don't want anything walking off, so they're going to.
Yes.
Secure. That'll be that's secure.
The planning board approved this amendment?
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Yes, sir, it's a public here. If you're here tonight, I'd like to speak for or against this possibility of this conditional view change. Just please come forward, state your name and address for the public, correct? We'd love to hear from you. Anybody?
Moving close to public here.
Second, second. Second, for all, whoever say aye. Any votes? Motion has carried. Mr. Glass, the ordinance, twenty-six, twenty-one, sir?
Thank you, it's a, an ordinance was provided in your packet that is for this addition to the site. There are a number of exhibits, including an Exhibit A zoning map, Exhibit B conditions list. There are sort of these, these documents here are included as attachments to that. We provided an ordinance for the same. And so this is meant to complement and add to the existing Walmart approval, and not change all that. So that's all intact and in place. This would just be amendments to that.
And did you say those improvements are part of the condition?
Yes, they are, sir.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. I'm certain.
Moving approved, the zoning request, part twenty-one dash three, two oh one, subpo, court northwest, to amend the site plan for the CC corridor commercial conditional district. Find that the request is reasonable in the public interest, because the land development plan recommends maintaining a strong commercial base to serve the needs of the residents of Conover. And the adjustments to the site plan will allow minor expansion of retail activities consistent with the intent of the group.
Thank you, thank you. Second. Second, camera. All voters say aye. Aye. Everybody, vote. Motion has carried, welcome, folks. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I'm Paul T, as a public here.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council.
Thank you.
Um, we've been working hard to make our ordinance consistent with new state law, one sixty D. This part tonight is an amendment to complement the definition section that's found in our ordinance, Exhibit A. That's where zoning resides in our code. And so we have a number of definitions that are to be consistent with our land use table, and also with other definitions required by the state. So we've got a list there of that. A big section of this is a rewrite, a reworking in some ways of the subdivision section. This went to the planning board last month. Subdivision is modified in a slight way. What would be proposed is that the site plan committee, which is where all development proposals begin in Conover, they would get reviewed in a sketch plan format, staff provide a comment letter. We refine those plans and make them consistent with City of Conover rules and regulations and standards. And that includes all the folks in the back of the room here are included in site plan review, including Mr. Panel. When the plans are refined, we bring to you all a preliminary plat. And that's basically, it looks like what it's going to be on the ground when they build it. They build a road, they install streets, any kind of curb and gutter, stormwater features, water lines, sewer lines, all those things go into the preliminary plat that's shown there. We would have a developer agreement at that time. These are basically complete plans. It's given a developer the go-ahead to build out the proposal to the plans. We would record that after having it reviewed by the planning board, which is a legislative review. I mean, sorry, it's an administrative review of meeting city standards. And when it comes to councils, the same thing. You all are having a hearing to ensure that the items on the subdivision meet city code. So that's shown to you all through a staff report and comments from my colleagues and myself to defend the preliminary plat. Now, should it be agreed to? We would get that recorded, as well as the developer agreement. Now, over the years, or hasn't been so many developments where we've had this process, my understanding we haven't had this process so clearly defined, but it will be clearly defined coming up with one sixty D. Developer agreements are at council, and they're reviewed and reviewed after a public hearing. So we'll have a public hearing for each developer agreement. And it's spelling out what the developer's going to do, what they're going to build, how much it's going to cost. So we make that agreement with the developer.
Is this a, is this a new adding step? I mean, are you, is this? We're going to have a preliminary plat recorded and first reviewed. Are you ever going to have a final plat to record it first reviewed? Like where we're going to pass Monroe?
Well, typically on a, on a subdivision, you would not record a preliminary plat.
Yes.
On a subdivision. Although, but if you have a subdivision that's really partly a CZ, I used to call PUD, which is a dumb kind of term. You might record a PUD, plenty of development. But typically, on just a plain old single-family subdivision, you would not record a preliminary.
Record those rules today. But recording that preliminary plat shows everybody, the community, anybody doing research, anybody doing private, council members, citizens, to see what's going to be built out there. We have a plan that's in the public realm, that's what, that's what register means.
This is part of one sixty D?
It's optional. One sixty D provides any and all options to councils. You can have staff do the whole process ourselves without ever coming to a public hearing.
Now, let me ask you, is this, is this adding cost to the developer?
It's simplifying, it's simplifying time and money to the developer. So this final step, let's say that the developer builds.
Does it cost attorney fees to record it twice for a lot?
I can take a subdivision down, record it myself, it's thirty-one dollars. Twenty-one dollars, I always, I'm always ten dollars off. But this, this final step, when the final plat, when they earn the final plat, right? A developer earns the final plat when they build everything. They build sidewalks, they build your streets, they build your water system, sewer system. Everything is in the ground, on the ground. They get the right then to start selling property, right? That they might build themselves, or they might sell those lots to others to build. So this final step, the staff have been paying attention to this thing the whole way through the construction. We do inspections, we'll get an engineer's report through the subdivision process. We'll see what the water line tests, that the sewer line's going to work. We have Duke Energy's gone under there, and they put the power lines. So that very last step, we used to bring everything back through the process again. It would go to the planning board again, and it would have to come to council one more time. But meanwhile, the staff's already assuring all that's done, or we're not going to let it loose to be recorded. So we're, we're shortening that last step to sort of streamline that a little bit further, because that's two months of time that the developer spent, maybe a year, year and a half, two years, building out a subdivision. And finally, at the very end, we're just holding it up for a process that you need to entrust your staff to take this last step on. And that's what we'll do. When it comes to zoning changes, changing the map, the state's very specific about all the steps. You have to do it a specific way every time. With subdivision, they're like, you might have a process where just a staff review. Or you might have a process where council touches every step of it along the way. We've got a hybrid system, and that's what's proposed.
I will say this, Conover traditionally is only, you only have a development agreement when the developer is building public infrastructure. Only when the developer's building public infrastructure do you have a development agreement. For instance, we just had one on the Wynn's transaction, because they were building sidewalks, street right-of-way, and sewer line. And so we had to have plans and specifications of these, these infrastructures that we're going to take over, that's going to be on our dime, that's built our standards. And that's all, that's been the case since we started doing the development agreements, which I guess maybe goes back to the way it's said in German.
Correct.
So Alan, you're saying this one slide summarizes these forty-five pages I read?
It was a little shorthand.
Why don't you say that's not much?
This is a public here. I'm here to speak on behalf of known definitions. Appendix, please. We'd love to hear from you. State your name and address of the public. Anybody?
I'm moving close to public here.
Thank you, Mr. Panel. Second, Mr. Paul Rock. All voters say aye. Aye. Vote. Motion has carried, aye, fifteen. Ordinance, twenty-seven, twenty-one. Mr. Glass?
Yes, so the ordinance was included, that's kind of how we do a code amendment here, is that we make the whole thing part of parcel to the staff report, so that's in your hand. We've also, I think, supplied a motion, a suggested motion. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, thank you for it.
Go, sir.
Alan, I want, want to ask a small little question. A duplex requires that two families occupy the same space. If they're the same family, you know, is it still a duplex?
If there's two cooking units, one in each unit is a duplex, right?
Yeah, but I mean, the way I'm reading it, so it's two families. They have to have, has to be two families to be considered a duplex. But if it's the same family occupying a building with two, two cooking units, is it still a duplex?
Yeah, it's based on the, the dwelling for a single family is based on, it's a complete unit for, you know, cooking, cleaning, that sort of thing. I guess if that family lived in a larger structure, had a unit on each side, they could cut a hole in the wall and make it one big house. So it's arranged or designed as two dwelling units, and then it follows up with the dwelling unit. It's a house or structure arranged for living quarters for one or more persons as a housekeeping unit, and that's the cooking facilities, bathroom, that kind of stuff. So these are all kind of trying to work together to be consistent. I think the, there's a lot of things in one sixty D that kind of separates out one and two family homes from other standards. And I think that's why that's, that they included some additional language for us for dwelling units and duplexes. Some rules apply only to a single family and duplex units and other things apply. Everybody else is commercial, kind of, commercial building code, so they're kind of making that consistent.
I can see that this was a lot of difficult work, so, you know, all I have to do is read it. You guys did a great job doing all the editing.
Eric Schluthing is a great editor for this kind of thing, he's got a very good mind for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm certain. Moving approved, change to appendix A definitions and appendix P subdivision regulations, undertaken to comply with newly adopted one sixty D state statutes. And find that this amendment is consistent with the intent to land development plan, and that the ordinance would be kept current and consistent with the laws of North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Panel, appreciate that. Second. Second, camera. All voters say aye. Aye. Anybody votes then? Motion has carried, thank you. One sixteen, as a public here, the office ordinance, amended chapter five with our city code. Mr. Panel?
Yes, twenty-eight, twenty-one, is that right?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Mr. Camera, my memo to you is only three paragraphs regarding this ordinance, which I think is about thirty-some pages long. But this is much simpler than what Alan was trying to do. This is chapter five, this is not in the zoning ordinance or the subdivision ordinance. This is our chapter five buildings where the minimum housing code appears, and the non-residential standards appear. And the General Assembly adopted one sixty D in June of twenty nineteen, they also grabbed all this stuff. And all we're doing in this ordinance is making sure to the best of our ability that the old statutory references under one sixty A are now the correct statutory references under one sixty D. We also made a slight few modifications in definitions, but they're very, very minor. Should basically track some of the ones Alan picked up in the previous ordinance. There's still a couple references to one sixty A in this ordinance, but those were under Article ten, and that has to do with taxes and tax returns. So that, those didn't change. Unfortunately, as far as I was concerned, is this statutory regime for dealing with minimum housing and non-residential buildings is quite clunky to deal with. It's really, really awkward to deal with, but that's the system that we have. They made really no changes in that. They just kind of brought over the old statute, slapped new numbers on it, made a couple little changes in the definitions. And you don't have to have a fancy motion for this ordinance because this is not a zoning or a subdivision. This is just merely a police-powered code, that's all it is.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Panel, appreciate the explanation. This is a public here, you're here to speak for or against this particular chapter five amendment. Would you like to hear from me this time? Just go forward, state your name, address, and vote, correct? Anyone?
Moving close, public here.
Thank you, Mr. Panel. Second, Mr. Camera. All voters say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion has carried, ordinance twenty-eight. Orders twenty-eight, twenty-one, Mr. Powell?
I think I tried to explain that in my comments, unless I have any questions, I'll say anymore.
I'll make that one. About a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kenner, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody? Motion has carried. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All more. And that's the contract for Whispering.
Right. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, what you have before you is a development purchase agreement regarding the new MSC Phase Two, which would be the private side. See on the illustration, which is also on board now, is a forty-five thousand square foot private unit, which if this contract gets fulfilled, the one you have before him, the developer Whispering LLC will purchase this at the end of the day when this building gets constructed and a condominium gets created. And then the public side will remain at the new MSC Phase Two. Give you the highlights of my memo, but essentially, they awarded a contract to build that whole facility. Basically, everything is public unit, private unit, what's outlined in orange, which will be the boundary of the condominium. They did some other off-site improvements to Matthews' construction for eight billion three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The developer has paid to the architect five hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and a completion now scheduled to be on or about May the ninth, twenty twenty-two. And we will sell to the developer the private unit for a purchase price of three million three hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. That is subject to change order. Certain change orders that affect our side of the transaction, that is, the blue part, that's on our net. If it's a change order that affects everything, that is both the blue and the green unit, that's on both sides' nets. And if it just affects the green unit, that's on their net. So that change order could go up or down typically, construction usually don't. But that could happen. This will be a condominium. And the reason why it has to be a condominium is typically, a condominium in Catawba County is not a common creature. One reason a condominium is not a common creature in Catawba County, land is not that expensive. It's not downtown Shaw, it's not downtown Rangerboro, it's not Raleigh. It's typically, you know, we're just paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for quarters of an acre or whatever. So we don't have condominiums, so when you buy a condominium, you're just buying air rights. But in this case, because of the peculiarities of the building code, that a condominium is the only way this project could proceed, because one of the ideas behind this project that you have in front of you is that men, women, and equipment can move freely back and forth. And that means more openings than the traditional building code, where the green side would have not been a condominium, and the blue side would have not been a condominium. The, I don't have the number in front of me, but the square footage that would have been available to have an opening between the two was something very minor, maybe a couple hundred square feet. And you'd have to have a firewall, and you're still going to have a firewall to some extent, as I understand it. But, and the building won't be sprinkled, of course. But the condominium lets the free flow of people and equipment to move back and forth. An example might be if, if you're familiar with the Charlotte Convention Center, and what's the hotel? Weston, is that it?
Omni.
Omni, Omni. So that is a condominium. Legally, that is a condominium. Similar situation, there's a small hotel now attached to NASCAR Hall of Fame. So that is a condominium to allow these free flow of people and equipment with all these big openings. So that's why you got a condominium.
So who owns the land?
The land actually will be owned by the Condominium Association. That's who owns the land. Under a condominium, you get a percentage interest in the common area. So the one, essentially, is the orange outline, that will then be owned by a condominium association.
Which will, what if all of the same percentages is the-
Actually, it will. They'll have a sixty percent interest, and the blue side will have a forty percent. There is a provision in the contract that says that, so condominium is governed generally by the members and the board of directors. So there's a provision in this contract that says the blue side gets to pick one director, the green side gets to pick a director, and those two directors pick the third. So that's about as good as we can do to maintain some veto power over the condominium. In other words, this is going to be a partnership, we're going to have to be along. There's also a provision that the declaration will provide, if you're going to start changing the outside of the building, the look of the building, the declaration is supposed to provide it. That takes unanimous vote of all the directors. So that gives both sides a kind of a veto over that.
But there's some zoning restrictions about how they can change it even if they want it?
There may be, yes, sir. I can't speak for this.
Pardon? They wanted to paint it blue, they couldn't do that?
Well, they'd have to get, Mr. Kenner, I can't answer that question.
But it would have to meet the city's code, would it not?
And I don't know that the color code applies in this area. Mr. Black, do you know?
It applies in the downtown area, but this area, I don't perceive painting the brick.
Yeah, you'd be painting brick, brick, this building's a brick for dinner building.
Yeah.
So we're probably painting-
Pardon?
We've seen some brick.
Oh, absolutely, yes, it happens, it happens. And who's to say that thirty years from now, that becomes very stylish, and that's what people want to do?
What about improvements to the overall structure? Is there a homeowners association?
I just get this condominium association, that's it, yes. In other words, and they would be required to put real money into the condominium, because you've got to have a sinking fund. Yeah, you've got a brand-new building on May nine, twenty twenty-two, but you've got to have a sinking fund for roofs, heating and air conditioning that's common. Now, some, certain things, roof, anything, roofs, brick doesn't do much outside maintenance stuff. If you're going to, if the condominium association is going to maintain the landscaping within, let's just say there's landscaping in here, you know, they'll have to have it done.
Can we get that in the rise probably?
Well, it's, listen, you're going to have to approve-
Normally, the city ends up-
Well, I understand that, Mr. Christopher Fullbright, but you're, it's going to come back to you to approve the condominium decoration. In other words, that'll be-
We haven't seen that before.
It doesn't even exist, because-
That was probably-
Well, you can't, I mean, one of the things I did think about is that it'd been nice in a perfect world to have a pro forma condominium decoration as a part of this agreement, but for certain things that were beyond, let's just say, beyond control of the parties, that did not happen. That'd been nice, if that would have been something that you would have agreed to ahead of time. One thing about, you cannot create a condominium legally, basically, because you got to build all this fence.
Right. Well, part of this is school, part of this is Whispering.
Correct.
Part of this is on the park. We get tax money off it, right?
Mr. Fullbright, that's my understanding, but I'm not going to sit here and just tell you that. But it'll be a property on the unit, they're going to get a pay revenue for it. It should be a taxable, it should be a taxable parcel of property. The county tends to, and the machinery act tends to have a presumption of taxability versus a presumption of not taxing.
Someone read through all of it, but can you walk us through the money? You know, they pay for, they pay for the architect?
Right, they don't get any credit on the purchase price for that.
Nothing on the purchase price. Now, the architect gets the full, the blue and the green?
Blue and the green, everything, yes.
Okay.
And of course, you have certain sub-designers, like HVAC designers, structural designers, civil designers, that's all part of the architect's plans.
So that's all on you then?
That's already done, that's what's referenced as Z of A and Z of B to this contract.
So now, we're going to build a whole, we've got no security for, you know?
Correct.
We're going to build the whole building.
You're going to build the whole building.
And when we're done with it, we're going to sell it to help with this and that. If he doesn't-
He didn't perform, and he has no other reason.
So, I think I know where you're going with that, and I think that's where the council's just got to be to have caution that of the monies that we have appropriated, we need to make sure they go to the structure. And the MSC has to be held accountable for taking by equipment and machinery until the structure is in a position where it's presented. Because I know where you're going, is that once we present that private structure, and for some reason, in those forcesure or whatever, and then they change their mind, then the monies that we receive from the federal government have to go pay that structure and it will also become property received.
Well, we've got nothing, it's supposed to have nothing to pay for the structure.
If we're certain-
If we don't do a bunch of changes.
If, yeah, that's very conservative of them.
Right.
The monies are supposed to go for equipment and machinery, that's going to have to be held.
That's going to have to be- Who's the problem for that? You know, who's watching that?
We should be.
I guess city manager, finance director, I would be the two people.
And you've got a, you've got a great service.
I was going to ask you a question that came up in this way. By the way, this is not federal money, this is now state.
True.
This is now, this is appropriation for the North Carolina general fund. This is not code in running.
So how long after we, like, what is the definition of completing building?
In the case of requiring the developer to buy the green unit, is that we got to have a certificate, license, that's the stamp.
So and then if that starts to fuse, is there a certain-
Yeah, he's got forty-five days within the reason to close, to buy.
Okay, yeah.
I have another question.
Yeah, that's, I think I might have addressed that in my, yeah.
Yeah, at least in here, I saw it.
Yeah. The, actually, I don't think I put that timeline in my memo, but it is forty-five days.
If for some reason, he would not purchase, he would not be entitled to any of the monies that he has put into it thus far.
That's what this contract says.
That's right. Important, sir.
Yeah.
I want to make that clear.
He forfeited all of the architectural things?
Pardon?
He would forfeit the architectural things?
Correct.
Is any other money given, right?
Right.
Has he signed this agreement yet?
He hasn't, you should have a signed copy.
Plus the representative, they're serbied.
Yeah, Dayser, Derek Commander signed it. The manager of this LLC, it's Mr. Dayser.
Okay, yeah, yeah. There's certain, so I think I read that we approve all change order?
Actually, we have a right to approve any change order that affects it. That's paragraph six, I believe, or five. I spent a lot of time on that, Duncan and I both spent a lot of time on that. So anything that has to do with the green side, we have clear authority to make a change order on the green side. He has a right to make a change on the green side with our consent, which we will unreasonably withhold, okay? However, we do have a right to withhold consent if it's some kind of structural change or a change in the exterior, which I can't imagine why he would want to change the exterior, but we got a right to withhold that. Or if it involves roof penetration, a hole in the roof that's not now designed, or a hole in the wall that's not now designed. So if, again, if it costs, if the change order increases the cost on his side, that just gets added to the purchase price. If it's a change order that affects the whole condominium, they want to change, this came up at the pre-construction meeting, guys, you weren't there, but it had to do with some kind of attachment to the roof. And I think it was attachment of some kind of HVAC units to the roof, whether they're going to be fastened or a pox. Now, I don't remember how it came out, but that's a change order that affects the whole condominium. So that, then the cost of that change order, which is really pretty small, so the difference in the cost. So fifty-seven percent of that cost comes on our side, forty-two change comes on his side. There's also in this contract a four-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency, which, by the way, fifty thousand has already been eaten up, because the parties, both parties agreed to tell Matthews to get on and order the steel as quickly as they could, which is going to cost more money to get it in today instead of waiting later. So that, I guess it's a pay-to-play almost. If you want it, you got to pay to play. Talking about steel, you can hear us about this, but Kathy told me that if you want to buy a shepherd's crook to hang your painting basket on, or your bird feeder, there'll be a shortage of metals. So it's got some kind of metal in it, that's for sure.
So was, is this all one big open space that I see you call it, right?
Pardon?
I'll talk about the problems.
Yeah, it's pretty much just a big open space, yes. It's just a big empty warehouse.
How high is the ceiling?
It's a question I can't answer, but I think it's at least sixteen feet.
On the whole length? So I would assume that if I see what the consultant has for what?
I'm guessing it's the same height, at least, as you go, when you go into the existing MSC, you turn left, you go into the ink banner side? I'm assuming it's the same, at least the same height of that.
Tony White was just talking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
They were consulting about more than we-
Oh, yeah, all that stuff, right.
This is based on their needs.
Yeah, their wants and needs, yeah.
Well, it may want and needs, probably more clearly.
But the ceiling, Mr. Kenner, I would say the same, that it's going to be the same height, at least. Remember, our side, the blue side, is two stories. Whereas the green side is only one story.
What would be, what are the risks here, here, to change order?
I think change orders is a risk of, in theory, in theory, the cost. And one of the things that happens along the way is that the pay requests come in, that we have to approve or to pay, which we want to approve until the architect says, pay the money. The pay requests are broken down from Matthews to attribute what goes to the green side and what goes to the blue side. And generally, everything that's outside the green is really on our own, our neck, essentially.
Where we can run is control, what I was going to say is on the public side, if MSC gets in there and decides to make a lot of different changes-
Right.
-without our alliance team being included, effective, then.
Well, supposedly, only the owner can sign a change order. Well, the owner is the city economist. So Mr. White, they're named an owner. So somebody that's authorized to sign a change order, which would typically be the city manager, and if worse goes worse, he'll have to lose some equipment from MSC one in MSC two, or he'll have to get into Mr. Inshall's pocket. Right, and one of the things that has to happen, and it didn't happen on this case, and this, because we, was that there'd be another document that'll have to be approved, is a similar lease that we now have on MSC one. It would be leasing the blue side to CBCC. So all this maintenance is going to be on their net. They got to pay the condominium, they got to pay the HVAC, they got to pay the insurance, which really, the condominium insurance holds, right? Yeah, that's part of it. When you have a condominium, you pay your monthly due or quarterly dues to the condominium regime, they buy the insurance, because that's what's insured is about this condominium situation.
Mr. Kenner, if you asked about the ceiling height, I believe it's going to be twenty feet.
Maybe I read it somewhere, but maybe you can help me. It gives fifty-seven point five seven percent to the city, forty-two point four three is the developer, but the square footage is opposite of that.
Right, what's the line? One of the lines gives is that we got a two-story building, so that's more expensive.
We got glass.
And then we took on, as part of the deal, is where any of the side improvements, they make this building ready, like get the water there, sewer there, the parking lot. There's the park, the street. The street, the new street is going to come in off the third street, that's kind of alarming.
Mr. Kenner, it's going to be, where you see the design, it's going to have glass on the front, his or-
Yeah, his is brick.
The product's gonna be brick, just, just the warehouse. There's no, there's no else that was.
Uh, that's, that's the first thing, there's nothing else that was. I didn't break, come up these figures, this is what Matthews did this on a breakdown, based, I'm sure, on some instructions that Mr. Duncan had given.
It wasn't value-based.
No, it wasn't value-based.
Not value.
This, the base.
Oh, you know, it's not.
It costs, the cost to build this structure, so, cost to build the, the green structure.
Like, Mr. Manow, I just want, I have to tell us, I want to say thank you, I know you, uh, you were intending on the private sector to help you with this contract, you wanted to write yourself, I appreciate the back and forth and all of this and that that you've done, it's just enormous amount of work, I want to thank you.
Well, you're welcome.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir, please.
There's nothing to do with this. Where do we stand with the bridge? Bridge is not part of any.
Bridge doesn't have anything to do with what I'm talking about, so if you wanna shoot arrows at somebody about the bridge, I ain't your guy.
And our number of conversations about, we gotta lay this bridge out, we gotta get it started, it's all.
That's not part of the.
We have Tim, we have Jimmy Farce Creek, Jimmy is no longer here, so we'll just move on.
We can lay down a couple of.
And I was, I'm gonna have to go.
Couple two by twelve, we'll do it.
Mr. Manow, I want a clarification on the, uh, you were talking about the roofing change order.
Yeah.
Uh, my understanding is that was a change order, which was a twelve-thousand-dollar credit.
Maybe.
Savings.
Could be, yes.
Not, not an increase.
All right, and, and I, you're, you, you could be exactly right.
I understand.
Yeah, I was in the room when they talked about it, and I, I don't remember whether it was a credit or a debit on the transaction, but it turned out to be a small amount of money.
And, and in grand scheme of things, I mean, twelve thousand dollars is a lot to me, but in the grand scheme of things, this project, I agree.
Uh, there's also a side letter agreement, actually, they're coming pretty close to fulfilling that. Uh, as of today, uh, Campbell had tendered the architectural contract that they wanted the developer to sign in the very beginning, tendered that. Uh, I feel very confident the developer is gonna sign that document, and then the developer's gonna assign it to us.
Yeah.
And, um, and maybe what, it's possible that we could take action on that assignment. Uh, we've denied it's available, if not, it'd be at a G meeting, but, uh, it, it, you know, it's the contract with, the contract with the architect that is what it is, that's what we're going.
That A one, I hear.
Pardon?
A one.
That's a, it's actually a B one-one. It's a B one-one, and arch, typically, with construction contracts, general contractors have the A in front of them, the architect, it's, uh, it's got a B in front of it. Yeah, I thought for a long time myself, I thought, uh, uh, so if you're going to approve this, uh, I motion to approve the development agreement and the side letter agreement, also.
I'll make sure you follow up with such questions. I think, I think, I think, all favors say hi.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. Newer, thank you, Mr. Kenner, uh, nineteen thirty-four, this, well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. Ordinance twenty-nine, twenty-one, means two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget ordinance, uh, to provide for additional revenue from the safer recruitment and retention grant that we have for the fire department. And this is to fund six additional sets of gear for the six additional, uh, on-call personnel that have been added to the roster. This is just, uh, uh, taking the money from the, the grant and getting the extra sets of gear.
Any questions, Mr. Kenner, on that? I'll make that motion. Say, thank you, Mr. Paul, all favors say hi.
Aye.
Much, thank you, I'm twenty, it's, uh, ordinance thirty dash twenty-one.
Uh, ordinance thirty dash twenty-one, it means the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget ordinance to account for revenues and expenditures for the Santa Cops and National Night Out revenue expenditures. Uh, you know, we've had Santa Cops and National Night Out for a long time, and we have always run that money through a liability account, uh, which we call the in-and-out account. But per audio recommendations, and this is probably the second or third year in a row that she's recommended it, and so I've decided, well, she's probably gonna write us up next time, so I decided that Kirk shouldn't have to deal with that. So, um, she says these should be run through, uh, revenue and expenditure accounts, because we thought, if you got money in a liability account, that means you owe that money to somebody, it's a liability on your balance sheet. But when those contributions are made for Santa Cops and National Night Out, we don't give the leftover money back to the donors, we keep that money and we use it for National Night Out and Santa Cops for the next year. And so, what'll happen at the end of the year, the money will go back into fund balance, uh, as all do in the general fund, but it will be committed, uh, a year in for the Santa Cops and the National Night Out purposes.
Got you.
So there'll be revenues and expenses for Santa Cops and National Night Out, rather than running the in-and-out of the liability account.
Thanks, ma'am.
Just makes it more proper accounting.
Or, like, we just, ordinance thirty, thirty-one. Make that motion, please.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kenner, all favors say hi.
Aye.
Much, thank you, Miss Karen, ordinance thirty-one, twenty-one.
Ordinance, uh, thirty-one, twenty-one, against the, uh, twenty, twenty-one budget ordinance by increasing the ad valorem tax revenue twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. The reason we're doing that, uh, increase is, uh, we're gonna transfer that extra money to the General Capital Reserve Fund, and it's to account for the three cents on the tax rate over the amount that was originally budgeted. Um, these funds will then increase the reserve for future capital projects in the General Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, several years ago, council decided, um, that we would put three cents of the tax rate into where all the tax money comes into the general fund, and then we budget to transfer three cents on the tax rate out over to the general fund capital reserve, to reserve money for capital projects. Well, as you know, we were very conservative with our budget going into budget, because we was, we were right to begin COVID. And, um, so when we looked back, as we got near the end of this year, to determine, based on the levy, what one cent was on the tax rate, we actually needed to move over an additional twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from the general fund over to the, uh, General Capital Reserve Fund to get the whole three cents. So that's basically what this budget amendment is for, I could not move that additional amount from the general fund over to the capital reserve fund without overspending that, uh, line item.
Thank you. Please, go ahead and say it, any questions? Thirty-one, twenty-one.
Uh, finally, ordinance, uh.
Hang on, just one second. Mr. Paul, I would say.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, all thirty say hi.
Aye.
Now, now thirty, thirty, thirty-two, twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I gotta get it right here. Um, ordinance thirty-two, twenty-one, it means two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget ordinance by procreating twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars of water sewer retained earnings, and transfers these funds to the water sewer capital project fund. This is to provide additional funds needed to purchase a two thousand and twenty-two Ford F five-fifty chassis with flat bed body. This piece of equipment is in our current budget, we did put an amount in, the budget that we're in now, but it's requiring an addition, these additional funds to actually make the purchase. And, uh, uh, Mr. Bradshaw's here, uh, this is his piece of equipment, so if you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them for you.
Just, uh, add additional equipment on it, or still up?
Uh, we had to get a larger crane to pull some of our wastewater pumps, there were, some of those pumps weigh nearly two thousand pounds, they're twenty-one feet in reach, this crane will help us, and in order to use the crane, we had to upsize to a larger five-fifty body, to handle the weight.
How much is the total cost of the whole vehicle, everything?
It's, uh, ninety, ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Sounds about right.
And that's not, if, if we went with a diesel engine, we were over a hundred and some, about a hundred and two thousand. So we went with a seven-point-three-liter, uh, gasoline. Plus diesels around here, they idle, uh, with all this new smog protection they have on it, causes a lot of issues.
And that is, you have a few on all of us, but.
That, and even the current ones now, we're still having to send off to have the, uh, DPF filters cooked out of just near the island. The wheels run on the highway, get hot enough to burn off some particulate.
Get a notice. Thank you. Thirty-two, twenty-one, make that motion, I didn't make that motion, thank you, Mr. Paul, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, all favors say hi.
Aye.
Everybody votes, much, much, thank you, Miss Lee.
Thanks.
I'm twenty-three, as the board reports, and the council, like, we're upstairs.
I will, uh, I will reportedly have a, uh, M P meeting last week, and I can tell you the, well, good news, bad news. The good news is the bridges on I forty, repair work on bridges on I forty have been moved up three years. They're moving from twenty-twenty-five, they will start work on the bridges in Catawba County, from Catawba County to the river for, uh, uh, twenty-twenty-two, okay? Uh, NC sixteen completion is now set for June twenty-twenty-two. And one-fifty widening has been moved back to twenty-twenty-five. And that's, that's the, I mean, that's, that's the local big stuff.
And that's a big change next month?
Well, um, supposedly, they have the, they have the money to start the I forty work next year, and sixteen is behind it. They've gotta get it finished.
Good.
So they're gonna replace the bridges, or just?
The, the only thing is, is bridge work, that's what we were talking in the week, with DOT. Bridge work has been moved up from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-two.
For one.
There's none, the Rock Bar Bridge, we've not seen anything of it yet. Now, we've seen seven different levels, but nothing's been changed.
So when you say bridge work, you mean the bridges that are on the traveling length of I forty?
The bridges, yeah, that are on the traveling length of I forty.
Not, not the overfenced, the underfenced?
Yeah, right, bridges you cross, like the creeks and things.
Right.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, Council, I do want to thank you, uh, well, I want to thank you for, uh, you know, Mr. Manow, uh, announced his, uh, retirement last May, uh, appreciate you participating in the, uh, energy for, uh, and, uh, Miss, Miss Susan Matthews has accepted positions as our city attorney, that will be effective, uh, one August. Uh, and Mr. Manow, uh, will be serving until thirty-one July, and at that point in time, uh, he has agreed, and we appreciate it, that he will stay as, uh, her backup, uh, for, for any kind of issues that either has more expertise in or could be considered a conflict, visibility, or, uh, some sort, that's some, some sort of big problem, uh, project. So I wanted to let you know that, um, and, um, thank you for, for helping me with that. Uh, city manager's fourth, uh, building, temporary building permits, uh, for a total of a little over a million dollars. Uh, we do have a budget workshop this week, it will be at Fire Station Three, Fire Station Three, it was in the farm road, uh, at five-thirty, uh, May the fifth, Wednesday, May the fifth. Uh, National Day in Frasier, uh, we have that, uh, Thursday at eleven o'clock, as the, uh, Norman Coley at the theater, and, uh, social business thing that, uh, masks are encouraged. Farmers Market, uh, first day of Farmers Market, May first, uh, from eight to noon, here in the public office. And also, our Independence Day holiday, uh, Monday, uh, that we normally meet is the fifth of, uh, uh, fifth of July, and city offices will be closed, so with your permission, uh, we'd like to move the July meeting to Monday, uh, July twelfth, normally, we probably go to July sixth on a Tuesday, but planning for meeting on, uh, a Tuesday. So, uh, July twelfth, if that works for, for everyone, we'll move to July. I've said the consensus of that.
Fine, I'm with you.
Okay, it's made.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, I think I have a question, sir, Monroe, uh, you know, while we're, you know, panel council member, is it four yes votes, did you look that up?
Yeah, it's, uh, actually, uh, I think I alerted, uh, Mr. Kennedy that last week. The general rule is that the first time a matter is on for the agenda, the first time it's on, will require four votes. The rule in the statute says if something's on for the first time, and you get two-thirds, it doesn't have to go to a second reading. Well, since we have six voting members, carry the day almost always takes four votes. So we never have had an issue of a second reading, at least, micro. Uh, Hickory routinely has second reading, I know that. So, uh, however, there's an exception to that rule, the exception is anything that falls under one-sixty-D, and you can take his favorite presenter on that, to vote, and, uh, uh, so, uh, you know, so a simple majority can carry the day on, 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 where a public hearing is required of one-sixty-D. If we get a three-two vote, it, it doesn't mean something. Uh, but almost anything else tonight that might have been on the, like these little budget ordinances, uh, first, if, if the vote been three-two, then you, it would become effective if you had a second reading, uh, next month. Now, Hickory also has two meetings a month, so that kinda helps them deal with second readings on a more routine basis, uh.
So three-two requires a second reading.
Requires a second reading.
And then after the second reading.
Three-two. It passed, okay, yeah, yeah. One person doesn't have veto, is where, I guess is where you're going with that, or, uh, well, are you two people wanting to veto? It's just that, uh, we require a second reading, which, uh, I don't have a real memory, Connor, but like I said, now my memory is somewhat short, um, but, uh, Connor's had a voting mayor for a long time, at least forty-seven years. And of course, we had commissioners before we went to the manager for government, but, uh, so, as you know, you got six people here, they have four, that, four votes to carry the day, so you always have two-thirds.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I was gonna, I guess, I didn't.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.